I'd like to call to order the January 17, 2012, meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. I invite you to stand with me as we offer an invocation. Following that, Commissioner Nash will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we thank you for another great day. We thank you for the community we live, the people that are in it. We pray that you'll always remind us of our role here to provide good service to our citizens and help to the community. Lord, we pray for protection for those in our public service that, you know, keep them safe, especially in police and fire, and for those serving overseas in the armed forces, we ask that you bring them home safely at their appropriate time. Thank you again, Lord. We ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Would you please call to the roll?
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning is absent. Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. Mr. Dunning would like to express his regrets for not being here. He took a little tumble and broke his wrist this weekend, so he's recovering from that. He'll be back with us next time. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing. We need to receive comments about our annual action plan for year nine of the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program. Mr. DeFebbe?
It's a pretty good introduction. As you, Mayor, mentioned, this is the ninth year of the city being an entitlement community pursuant to the process that we're required to follow by HUD. It starts with a public hearing to solicit comments from the community about ideas about how we can spend this money. Brent Childers is here to present an overview of the Community Development Block Grant Program in the city of Bowling Green.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, Commissioners. The CWG program was actually instituted in the Housing Community Development Act in 1974. It was a combination of seven different programs that they consolidated to create one Community Development Block Program. As Mr. DeFebbe said, we've become an entitlement community. This will be our ninth year, starting July 1 of this year. Before that, we were competitive where we actually applied annually through the state. So we receive our funding directly from HUD. That funding is derived from a formula that calculates population, poverty, age of housing, overcrowding, and growth lag. This year, the FY '13 year will be the first year that the 2010 census data is inputted. So it takes a year to count the numbers, a year to analyze the numbers, and a year to input the numbers. So now we're starting to see the changes from the last census impacting our CWG funding. The way this goes about is we have to do a five-year consolidated plan. We did one three years ago. That lays out the priorities of the CWG program, and then every year we do an annual action plan, and that lays out the specific projects. This is the start of the year nine annual action plan, and I'll go through the timeline in just a second. From the consolidated plan, we laid out three main priorities: affordable housing opportunity, economic opportunity, and education and counseling. Those are our priorities that were developed three years ago. And in that, under the affordable housing opportunity, we've got two kind of subcategories of homeownership opportunity and rental housing and supportive services. So those are really the focuses of where our funds are directed. An example of some economic opportunity programs that we've done is the small business development and also transit expansion. Education and counseling, fair housing that we do with the Human Rights Commission, and also foreclosure prevention and homeownership pre- and post-purchase counseling. For all CWG projects, you must meet at least one of these national objectives. The first one, benefit to low to moderate income persons. There are two types of low to moderate income. It's 80 percent of the area median income or presumed benefit. An example of a presumed benefit would be abused and neglected children, domestic violence victims, disabled seniors. Those are presumed to be LMI. The other, you'd have to go through some type of other survey method. Also, slum and blight. We don't really do very many of these. Some more of our older CWG, whenever we were through the state, was through some more slum and blight programs, but since we've become entitlement, we really haven't used that national objective. And the last one being urgent need. We probably never will use that national objective. It has to be tied to a presidentially declared disaster, and there has to be no other funds available for that purpose. So it's really a tricky, it's a very unique situation. This is the process. It starts, it actually started in late December, whenever we advertised for a comment period, which we're in the middle of now. The comment period will end on January 26. The applications will be released on January 27, that Friday, and then they will be due back to my office on February 24. So we've been accepting comments since the end of December, whenever it was first advertised, and we'll continue to accept comments until January 26. Once the applications are out, it'll be up to the agencies to complete the application, submit them back by the required deadline, and then after that, it will go through a technical review, where I'll review them to make sure that the activities are eligible, and then it'll go through a committee review, where the commission appointed citizen members to review applications. We've instituted that in a back-and-forth exchange where we actually have time. The agencies will come in, present their project, and then there'll be a question-and-answer back-and-forth between the committee, and then the committee can review and make a decision from there. After that, I'd actually write the plan, the physical plan, bring it to you for another public hearing, where we tell everybody what we're going to do, and then you all approve it. 1st of May, we'll send it off to HUD, and then we start the environmental review, and actually the projects will start sometime in July. So this is the start to the process to get to the point to start in July. This is a list of eligible activities under HUD rules, and we've done some of these, and I'll give you some examples here in a second. There are certain things that are specifically prohibited by the use of these funds. General conduct of business, we can't build City Hall with CWG funds, so that is one. Political activities, new housing construction, income payments, these are things that are explicitly, expressly prohibited under the regulation. This is a breakdown of how we've spent funds over the last eight years. Looking at this, we're really starting to see some changes between housing and public facilities. In the beginning, the first few years, housing was a much higher percentage, almost probably 90 percent. Public facilities has now come on to take away some of that percentage, and I think a lot of that has to do with the boat landing project. That's a large project that we're doing over in Delafield, and then also some of the park improvements that you all approved through an amendment last year. The economic development activities, most of those have been in small business development and entrepreneurial development. And then public service, we've just started funding those in the last couple of years, and I think a lot of that's due to the economic times and the need for these agencies out here. Going back to that administration, through the life of the program, we spent 5 percent. There's a restriction on that, that we can only spend 20 percent, so we've been far below that regulatory threshold or regulatory barrier for the administrative cost. Here's some examples of some previously funded activities based on eligible activity. Acquisition of property. We purchased property for Renaissance Village, the Independence Place, Community Action Childcare Center, the Weatherization Transit Building, and also the CASA Expansion Project. We've also done some residential rehab. We had the homeowner rehab program several years ago. We've also done rental conversion, where we're buying homes that would be or were or would be rentals, purchasing and then selling them to income-qualified families, and then also some emergency home repair. Here's examples of some of the public services that we've done in the past. The childcare, transit, and also assistance payments through the Bowling Green Warren County Welfare Center. I've got to make sure I keep all my agencies correct. Some construction activities. We've got one underway right now. It's the brass facility, and I think that there's an amendment on the agenda tonight for that. That one's moving along, and we expect to meet the new deadline without a problem. Expansion of the Phoenix Place Learning Center. I think that one's about ready to bid. We've met all the environmental rules, so now I think they're ready to bid that out. And I also talked about the boat landing sidewalk project. Administrative costs, there's two parts to that. One of those is our fair housing, and the other one is just kind of the overhead expenses to run the program. You know, it takes a lot of time to run this program and make sure that everything is done. All CWG projects must meet certain outcomes. This provides HUD the opportunity to measure everything on a plane across the entire nation. So we use, or they use, an online system where every project has to report certain outcomes. Who are they serving? How many people are they serving? Different types of measurements. So we use those, we pass those on to our agencies, and they report those back to me. I report them to HUD, and then HUD can then go to Congress and say, "This is what we've done in the last year." I say that because HUD is really pushing that now. The last several years, they did not do as good a job of reporting what they've done. So the reporting requirements for the CWG program keep stepping up. They want more and more data, more and more information. This is a kind of table that HUD uses for outcomes and objectives to meet. This is part of the application process. This is something that HUD passes down to us, and these are the types of outcomes and objectives that the CWG program is out there to achieve. This year, we're expecting $496,000. Last year, we received $511,000. The year before that, we were at $610,000. So last year is when we took the significant hit. A lot of that came through the budget in Congress, and we waited a long time, waited a long time. We finally got our number. I think a lot of the reason that we didn't receive as much of a cut was because of our census data going into effect. Louisville, as my understanding is, is preparing for a 38 percent cut. We're at about 3 percent, so we actually fared pretty well. I was, before I received word from HUD, I was already prepared for about another $100,000 cut. That's how I was planning for it, because I'd already received one, I was expecting another. Something that I instituted last year is a CWG workshop, and that is an opportunity for the agencies to come in, and I give about an hour and a half presentation of CWG, go over most of the rules, the highlights, things to think about, eligible projects, how the money flows, how everything works, so they have a better understanding of what it takes to get one of these projects through. This is a very regulated program. There's a lot of rules to follow. It's a very flexible program, but, you know, you just have to navigate through the rules. So this is an opportunity for them to ask questions, and I do this at the beginning of the application period, so if there's any issues that they have or any questions, they can go ahead and get those addressed before they actually put the application together. This year, it's going to be on January 31 at the Parks and Rec Community Room. I would ask that each agency send at least one representative. It should last no more than two hours. Like I said, we're still accepting comments until January 26, so if anybody has any comments, they can send, submit them to me in writing or even through the phone. My email address is here, and this will be put on the website tomorrow, so if anybody wants to look at it that's out there, or they can just send them directly through the mail. And at this time, I'll answer any questions from the commission, and if there's none, then I'll open it up for comments on the floor.
Anticipated funding?
Yes.
If it's not there, we don't?
Well, I say that because it could fluctuate up or down by some amount. I feel pretty strong in using that as a budget figure moving forward. We won't know an actual number till probably late April or May, but that is the number that I've been given from HUD. Last year, I got no number whatsoever. It was whatever I could read through the news reports of what was going on in Congress. So I feel confident in using this number as a workable number. Last year, I think I used $60,000 cut, then it came out, I had to cut another $40,000. So I, and that was with no direction from HUD. At least this time, I do have some direction from HUD, and I anticipate using this.
And the 5 percent administrative costs, is that sufficient to cover the effort that the city puts in on?
The 5 percent is what we've used over the life of the program. We're eligible to spend up to 20 percent, but over the life of the program, we've only spent 5 percent. We, you know, balance that out based on what our needs are through the budgeting process, and then we'll also balance that out with the needs of the agencies. But that is a restricted category of the 20 percent, but I don't think that, we shouldn't have any problems in managing within that.
Do you know how much was used for administrative costs in the last one that you can remember?
Last year, 20, I think the total amount was somewhere around 82, and I think we would have kept, our internal would have been somewhere in the 40 to 50 range, because our fair housing portion comes out of that also, out of the total 82.
But obviously, the more that we do not use for administrative costs, there's more for the program needs, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else? Well, this is a public hearing, so this is an opportunity for those who would like to make comments regarding the, I guess at this time, the action plan, not necessarily the proposal at this time. If you can come to the microphone and give us your name and address. Everybody's sitting on their hands, so I guess that'll be all. Is there anything else, Mr. Childers?
That will be it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Mr. DeFebbe, do you have anything else to add?
No other comments on it.
All right. The next item on the agenda are awards and recognitions.
Bruce, I do think somebody wanted to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Please come forward. I apologize, I didn't see your hand.
I was just slow to go.
Please, please give us your name and address or the agency you're representing.
Karen Myers, Executive Director, Hotel Inc., 1005 Boat Landing Road, Bowling Green, Kentucky, 42102.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say that the use of these funds could really aid the 17.1 percent impoverished in Bowling Green, and that Bowling Green is a beautiful city and has so much to offer the community. And at that same time, there are some holes in the service that Bowling Green provides. We have emergency shelter with the Salvation Army, and that's 30 days. That is a blessing. You'll have people off the street and into some services immediately. But after 30 days, if they haven't found a job or haven't gotten back on their feet, those doors are closed for them. We do have services for folks that are disabled. There's transitional housing, a period of time to help them get acclimated and back on their feet and into services or into jobs. We do have drug and alcohol transitional housing. We do have domestic violence transitional housing, but if you do not fit special needs in this community, there is not transitional housing for you. That's one of the holes. If you had transitional housing, people could have mentoring, budgeting, job counseling, and get on their feet, have a three-to-six-month period of saving funds, and then be able to be a successful citizen again. So one of the holes. And I just, as long as I'm up here, I'm going to point out a couple more holes, if it's all right with you. The bus lines need to go to the industrial parks where the jobs are. People who have low income can't afford a vehicle and are counting on that transit, and they do not go to the industrial parks, and they don't run in the evening. So that's something you might want to consider looking at as well. And another area is something you're all going to be working on, I'm sure, for a number of years, is jobs. And not only jobs, but jobs that are a living wage. We have people that are working in the service industry, restaurants, retail, and they're working 15 to 20 hours a week without benefits, without sick days, without medical insurance. Some of them have two of these kind of jobs, and they're trying to support families. So we have what maybe was a trend eight, 10 years ago of hiring part-time workers is now become how people manage their business, how people run their businesses. Hire one full-time manager, and all the workers are part-time. No benefits, 15, 20 hours, no set hours sometimes, so it makes it difficult to have two jobs, because you don't have set hours. So if somebody's sick, they miss out on their paycheck, and the family all of a sudden doesn't have their electric money, and they come into Hotel Inc., and if we don't pay that, sometimes they take the house payment money, and they start covering that electric, and then the house payment falls, and it ends up being a homeless situation. So it's not your, money's not going to help to say to corporations or to businesses, can you have a living wage? Can you have a consciousness about hiring? That's something that has to happen in America. But what I'm saying to you is jobs, good jobs, that are 40 hours, that have medical benefits would be helpful, too. So bus lines, jobs, transitional housing. Thank you.
May I say one thing before Karen sits down? I went to a meeting last week or week before last at the Life Center with the coalition that deals with this problem, and you just gave just a thumbnail sketch of the issues. You did a really nice job summarizing it, obviously. But this is a problem, particularly when you consider the number of children that are involved?
Yes, sir.
In all of these issues and jobs and training. But there is a group trying to work on some things, but there's so much that needs to be done in this area, and I don't know how. I know we'll vote on this sometime, but this has to, to me, this has to be a priority.
Yeah.
It really does. If 17 percent of our population is under the poverty level, then, in particular when you involve children, that doesn't seem like that should be acceptable for a community like Bowling Green. So thank you for what you do and the others that are out there as well with the folks trying to deal with these issues, but it is something I hope we can use, direct some of this money to.
It says there's 3,585 families who have children between 5 and 17 that are in poverty in Warren County.
Cheryl Allen also gave each of us this poverty simulation registration form at Rivendell. You know, I've been on this side, whether, when I was in city government or now trying to help. If you go to this poverty simulation, they put you in a situation where you're the one that needs the help, and it's, I don't know, two or three hours, Cheryl, four, something like that. And it really gives you a different mindset of what people go through, and if somebody tells you they'll give you $125, and it'll take you six weeks to get that, but you don't have any money, it really causes some problems. So this is a real problem that I think that a lot of us don't take in consideration probably as much as we should. But anyone that would like to go to that simulation, I think it's well worth the time, and it really makes you think about other sides of this issue.
All right.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Be prepared to make the same comments to, there's a citizen committee that will make recommendations to us, so make sure you coordinate with Mr. Childers on that. Anyone else? All right, then we'll close this public hearing and continue on with the agenda. The next item on the agenda is awards and recognitions. I think Mr. Lackey will be coming up. As he's coming, we do want to acknowledge Ms. Kentucky Ann Belair Thornton, who won the Quality of Life Award at the Miss America Pageant last week, and was an excellent representative of our hometown here in Bowling Green, and thank her for, and I thank the half of Bowling Green that went with her out there for their work in that area. Mr. Lackey?
Mayor, Commissioners, Operation Pride helped in getting those three signs installed with the State Highway Department to recognize her as Ms. Kentucky. So, and those will be up through the year until the next competition. Today, I'm here to present a commercial award, and it's a February award for GoBG Transit. It is at 304 East 11th Avenue. And for those of you that know that site right down the street here, when I came to Bowling Green, there was a Goodyear Tire Store there, and I think later Judge Thompson bought that, and he changed it all, made it to Office Space, and now it just recently changed hands into the Go Bowling Green Transit. And I've got a couple before and after. I wish, I tried to find a website and get ahold of some of the Goodyear Tire things, but I couldn't do that. But this is a picture when it was changed over to the law offices there and business, and this is what it looks like today. This evening, I have three representatives. I have Cheryl Allen, the CEO and Executive Director, and I have Donna Thule, who is a transit manager, and Ken Meredith, the Public Transit Coordinator. If they would come forward, please, to accept the award.
Thank you for the city. Jean, when we were trying to do the countdown before the deadline, did you think we'd make it?
No.
It's been, like a lot of our projects, hurry up and wait, and hurry up and wait, but we are excited about the project. What you see now is Phase One. We were able to do a lot of the exterior improvements, a little bit of work inside. We're waiting for approval from Kentucky's Office of Transportation Delivery Service to go out for bid on the second phase. So hopefully, by June 30, you'll see a few other improvements, signage, onings, and some more interior improvements. So thank you to the city of Bowling Green for partnering with GoBG Transit for this project and to provide the transportation so important to all the services, and services and people in Bowling Green. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, Commissioners, Mayor, I talked to you last week when we were talking to Mack Yow, and I would be remiss if I didn't discuss that one issue. Thank you. This evening, talking about poverty in the community, and Slim, when you close the prayer, talking about our servicemen and our soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines. I'd like to bring forward an issue with the Fricka family real quickly, if I may. It's out on Porter Pike. They have a sinkhole in their yard, and it's a very large sinkhole. The Daily News has ran an ad in the paper for it, and WBKO has it on TV, but I'd like to just let you know that this soldier served three tours in Iraq, twice as a Marine and once with the 101st. He is now deployed to Korea, and he has a family here alone. We got Mack Yow and Mike Murphy, who are businessmen here, you know, have stepped up to the plate and said that he is going to take care of that regardless of the cost. But now Independence Bank has set up an account for the Fricka sinkhole account, and we're asking for donations. So if you would, anyone that has some extra money to go out and help this family and this soldier. Thank you.
Thank you. You can make that donation at any Independence Bank locations. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Are there any other awards and recognitions?
No, Mayor.
All right. Do you have any comments tonight?
No comments.
And the first item, then, is to approve the minutes from the January 3, 2012, meeting.
Subdued.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Waltrip. Any additions, deletions, corrections? Please call to the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. We now have time for public comments. If anyone in the audience would like to comment on any item that is not on tonight's agenda, this is the appropriate time, and I believe we do have one item coming forward. If you would, come to the microphone and please introduce yourself and give us your address, if you don't mind.
My name is Connie Clark Harrison, and I live at 1531 Franklin Road in Brentwood, Tennessee, 37027.
Yes, ma'am. What can I do for you tonight?
Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I am the State Director for the Miss Kentucky USA and Miss Kentucky Teen USA Pageant, which is run by Miss Universe Organization, and that is owned by NBC and Donald Trump. And I have chosen this year to have our official pageant here in Bowling Green. It's this upcoming weekend, and I know it was kind of a late start this year. We were in Louisville last year, and I came here and saw Van Meter Auditorium, and it was gorgeous, beautiful, state-of-the-art stage in lighting and sound, so I decided to come here. So I just want to introduce myself to Bowling Green and let you know that we're bringing, I guess, probably about 60 parents and friendlies and fans that are going to be coming for the entire state. The girls will be here for the entire weekend, and we're staying at the Hampton Inn, and we'll be at Van Meter for three different events. So I wanted to come and bring you all a pamphlet, if I could, and also the program book from last year in Louisville, so I have enough for everybody. I can put them together and give them to you so you can see them. So we've had one winner from the state of Kentucky who won Miss USA, and she won, I think it was five or six years ago, Tara Connor. It's the first time ever we had a Miss Kentucky win in the USA. So we rank about third in all the states, 50 states, as far as doing good when they go to Miss USA. So we bring, I think, some recognition to the state with that. But also, what I've tried to do all these years is that I've tried to help these young ladies become better people and employers, and as far as students, you know, family members, wives and daughters. And I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, because I got lost going around town, but I finally found it. So I really try hard to help these girls become more educated about the world and about doing other things with their lives than decide possibly, you know, not even attending college. attending college. So, being on a huge stage and becoming a part of an event kind of gives them a different outlook than they normally would have at their school unless they're involved in the arts. So, there's a lot of opportunities for men and young boys in life as far as sports are concerned. But if you're not a sporting person, then, you know, someone that wants to do something, possibly to be on stage, this is one of the avenues. And there's no discrimination in this, so anyone that enters can be in the pageant. There is a sponsorship fee. But, you know, no discrimination for race. Of course, you have to be a female. You can never be married and never have given birth to a child. So, but there's no discrimination. So, you may see some girls, if you come to the pageant this weekend, that you might think, they don't belong in the pageant, but we treat everybody the same. You know, they're all really special, and we try to help build their self-esteem while they're there for the weekend, so that when they leave, they feel better about themselves than when they came. So, that's our whole goal. And this year, we have had the opportunity to partner with Cozair's Hospital in Louisville, and I think we've raised probably about a hundred thousand dollars for them. So, they've let us come to their events that they've had, the Snowball Event, also a lot of charity events that they've had, and the girls have come. And these are not the winners. These are just contestants that's getting ready to be in the pageant. So, we're trying to teach them to serve people, and instead of just always taking, you know, to give back. So, that's what we've tried to do this year. So, I think this year, we have a smaller group, but I think they've been, you know, they've learned a lot, and also about branding themselves. So, we're coming here to Bowling Green, and we're very excited to be here. And I've been working hard with Van Meter, and I appreciate your time this evening. So-
You said you had three events. When are they again?
The first event is on Saturday, and it starts at seven thirty, and that's a preliminary competition. And that is opening number for teen and Miss, and then we have swimsuit and evening gown. And so, the Miss will go, and the teen will go, and the Miss will go, and the teen will go. So, the ages start at fourteen, they go all the way to nineteen, and then nineteen to twenty-seven. You know, we've had some girls compete for eight and nine years, you know, and that just shows they really love coming back, you know? And they may not win, but, you know, they're still winning by coming, you know? I think it shows a lot of character for these girls that come back every year, every year, every year. Because, you know, it's just almost like it's just luck to win anyway, I think. So, the next competition is on Saturday, and it's at four thirty, and that's the finals for the Miss Kentucky USA Pageant. And whoever wins that pageant will compete at Miss USA, and last year, it's been in Las Vegas for the past two or three years. I don't know, it may be in Miami this year. It's wherever they find a host city.
So, that's Friday at seven thirty, and Saturday-
Now, Saturday is the first one. That's preliminaries.
It's seven thirty in the morning?
No, at night.
At night?
Yeah.
And then what's at four thirty?
The next day-
Oh, Sunday.
-on Sunday, January twenty-second. That is at four thirty, the Miss Kentucky USA Finals. And the teen pageant starts at eight o'clock. Then we'll have, we'll crown the teen and the Miss, and the Miss will, they have it Atlantis at the Bahamas. So, both of these girls will go to a national competition, and I'll be on my national website, on my website, and Bowling Green will be connected with the Miss Universe site and the Miss USA site and the Miss Teen USA site, once you're connected with my side. And I get about over a half million hits a year, and I have a huge Facebook following for a lot of people. So, what I would like to do, if, you know, if this works out well at Van Meter, and I also, when I drove into town the other night pretty late, I saw your new beautiful Performing Arts Center. And I was there at the Performing Arts Center for about twelve years in Somerset. But I'm a Kentucky girl originally. I was born and raised in Benton, Kentucky, so Kentucky is near and dear to my heart. So, when I come through Bowling Green, it reminds me of Benton some, but it's a progressive city, and you have a lot of population here. And what I'm trying to do is to not just have, you know, people stereotype beauty pageants as being, you know, just beauty, and that's not what it is about for me. We have to have a pageant, and the girls do have on swimsuits, and a lot of them are very, very fit, but that's because they choose to be that way. You know, they're proud of theirselves, and they want to win, but they also carry other things around with it. So, I do this for a different purpose than just the beauty part of it. We've got to have a beauty pageant, but I'm here to help these young ladies out. So, I think Bowling Green's a beautiful city. I've got judges coming from all over the state, Tennessee, some from Kentucky, and I have video people coming from Kansas. I have a photographer coming from Louisville, and we've been working really hard. We had a really nice event at the Seelbach this year in December, and they wanted us there, and Louisville wanted us back. But when I saw Van Meter, it was, you know, a done deal. You know, you've got a state-of-the-art facility here, and I'm sure this Performing Arts Center is going to give it a good run for its money. So, I'm anxious to see that also. So, I would like to just tell you all that I'm happy to be here, and I have a nice sponsorship packet that we have sent, and I've also got a program book, you can see that we do. So, I'd like to have you all come, if you'd like to. Someone would like to come and say hello to all the people that are here, because they're coming from all over the state. So, you'll be linked with my website, which will go directly to Miss USA website and Miss Universe website. So, Bowling Green will be linked. So, now you all got a connection with Donald Trump, sort of.
We're talking about Slim's hair.
Is that good? Do you like Donald Trump?
We're talking about his-
Pardon me. We were only comparing hairstyles.
Oh, comparing the hairstyle. His hairstyle is a little different.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Hears.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you coming in and sharing that with us, and look forward to having the event here this weekend.
Thank you. Would you, can I leave these someplace for y'all?
Please. The clerk will take them here. All right. Any other pub comments? All right, let's begin with our regular agenda. The first item is the second reading of Ordinance two thousand twelve, number one.
Ordinance Amending Zoning Ordinance, Ordinance Amending Articles two point seven, three point one eight, four point nine point two, and Appendix A, exhibit C of the zoning ordinance for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, as recommended by the City-County Planning Commission.
Submove.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order two thousand twelve, number ten.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Laura B. Cornelius to the position of Communications Dispatcher in the Police Department.
Submove.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill.
One of the more difficult positions in the city government is that of dispatcher in the Police Department. It's a high-stress position, requires a special individual with training to handle that properly. We have ongoing vacancies in that department, and we're here tonight to fill this position, hopefully, one of the vacancies with an experienced person from Scottsville Police Department. They already have their training, and they went to the academy, to the Telecommunication Academy, and they've met all the criteria of being a dispatcher, so we recommend them for approval. Doug is here. Do you have any questions about how this is handled?
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order two thousand twelve, number eleven.
Municipal Order approving the Audubon Drive Drainage Improvements Project and authorizing the City Law Department to negotiate the purchase of properties necessary for this project, and further authorizing the mayor to execute deeds, easements, and other documents related to property acquisitions necessary for this project.
Submove.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Mr. Fable.
In August of two eleven, Public Works Department, in a working session, presented to the commission a list of various projects that needed stormwater mitigation. Number one on that list was Audubon Drive Drainage Improvements. In order to do that project, we're going to need to acquire additional property, which is not unusual to increase the drainage area, as well as to obtain easements. This takes some investment of money, in this case, approximately eighteen thousand dollars. Jeff Lashley is here, if you have any questions about the project, but essentially, this is permission to allow Gene to negotiate the purchase of a lot, as well as some easements, which are identified on your drawing in your packet.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Next is the first reading of Ordinance two thousand twelve, number two.
Ordinance Amending Code of Ordnances, Ordinance Amending Chapter Nine, General Offenses of the Code of Ordnances, to make changes recommended by the Bowling Green Police Department related to the discharge of firearms and similar equipment.
Submove.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Nash. Our police chief, Doug Hawkins, was recently approached by a VP from Daisy Outdoor Products concerning the possibility of doing a BB gun demonstration in the city. Doug, in doing due diligence, discovered that our current ordinance doesn't allow for that, and also discovered some other informalities about discharge of firearms within the city. This ordinance represents an attempt to clean up some of those prior and outdated issues, as well as to allow the proper discharge demonstration of BB products. Doug is here, if you'd like to hear a longer version of that explanation. Is there any discussion? Thank you, he says. Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
I appreciate Doug even showing up to be ready to say something.
Doug is always ready to make a comment, even when I don't remember his name, right?
Municipal Order two thousand twelve, number twelve.
Municipal Order approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the subrecipient agreement between the City of Bowling Green and Barren River Area Safe Space for the Year Seven Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Submove.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Mr. Fable.
At the public hearing Brent Childers mentioned about the different projects that we were able to fund, one of those is the Barren River Area Safe Space to provide a location for people encountering difficulties. They have been approved by the city through contract, but through the bidding process to build the building, they've encountered some problems and are asking for an extension to September thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. We staff have no problem with that and actually think that will be good, acceptable, and it won't cause us any problems. Brent is here, if you have any questions.
Any discussion?
Only, Mayor, if I may. I know this is related to the bidding and permitting of a building, but the work that the Economic Justice Institute will do once built and once operational is pivotal to anybody escaping a domestic violence situation. Often, we think, we stereotype people into believing that people stay in a particular environment because they choose to, and in many cases, they have no options. Financial security, stability, and independence is one of the things that will allow people to break the cycle, and providing personal financing training to victims of domestic violence is just, it's not just one step, but it's one of the larger steps that will allow people to break that cycle of violence.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. No further discussion. Let's please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
And Municipal Orders two thousand twelve, number thirteen.
Municipal Order appointing the mayor, Chief Financial Officer, and City Clerk as directors to the Board of the Bowling Green Public Properties Corporation and to the Board of the City of Bowling Green Municipal Projects Corporation, and authorizing the city clerk to file appropriate changes with the Secretary of State.
Submove.
Motion by Hill, second by Nash.
In your packet is a crisply worded memo from Gene Harmon concerning this issue, and I would defer to him to explain the nuances of why this is necessary and what exactly the commission is voting on, given the nature of how general obligation bonds have changed over time, but how this is still important for us to do. Gene?
Well, as the city manager said, hopefully, we can do away with both these organizations before long. Years ago, we always hate to use the word legal fiction, but the cities could not issue general obligation bonds. They were obligated. What we did, we issued BB bonds. We basically created holding companies, conveyed property that we built to the holding companies, and then made the bond payments, those mint payments. Once these were done, and they were conveyed back in the city, we still have two holding companies in existence. Every once in a while, we look back to see what they're still holding, but eventually, we'll do away with both of these. But by law, when you create these things, you actually have to name people in the articles of corporation, not positions, people. But they've always been the mayor, the chief financial officer, and the city clerk. Sometimes during the year, as in this past year, those positions change, so we're obligated to notify the Secretary of State's office when those positions change. Every July, we're obligated to do an annual report, the list of new people. Sometimes in July, those names change. And Katie just wanted to be assured that we've got, because she signed a card, sent to Secretary of State's office, we're obligated during the year to report changes as well. The only thing this is, is a housekeeping municipal order, giving her the ability to put in the current up-to-date names on those changes.
Thank you. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. That concludes our regular agenda. The next scheduled meeting is February seventh, two thousand and twelve. Thank you for tuning in.